I'm going to call this report in 6:00. We have a question.
Oh, you don't have it. Uh, who can say it? I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oliver, who are your directors and attendants?
Um, we've got three items on the agenda today, beginning with the demographers report, um, the pledge of integrity, and then, uh, we'll talk a little bit about the home care's role that the board had discussed at a, um, work study retreat earlier in the spring. And then finally, uh, budget status update from Lori and Bill. AJ, I see Les on the screen up there. Les, are we coming through clear for you?
Yes, I can be fine. Can you hear me right?
Absolutely, loud and clear. And we'll ask AJ to, uh, flip over to your presentation. And I'm not sure if you'll be able to see it.
Yeah, I'll make sure to share it.
Give me one second. All right, Les, we're gonna turn it over to you, sir.
All right, um, so, uh, I have a very important, I have a very important question. Um, about fifteen to a minute, who was more than last year? And getting some feedback, uh, let me see, all right. Um, so anyway, I wanted to go through things a little further to the next slide.
He's working on, uh...
Okay. We've got to stop eating like this.
There we go.
Okay, so this is the outline that I want to kind of cover tonight. Um, the first part is enrollment, and, um, this is a pretty important part of the presentation. And you may have noticed that, uh, the enrollment has been affected quite a bit by the pandemic. And I think there's three things that are worth mentioning here. Um, the first one is that population growth slowed due to COVID, but also this in the last year, even as some recovery from COVID, uh, population growth has been a lot lower, uh, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four than it was in the previous decade, almost every year. Um, and then after we talked about, then the other thing I think that the pandemic has an effect on is, um, it's kind of changed where people work, live. Like, you have more people are looking to, uh, housing that is farther out, maybe affordable or available, things like that. And so I think that's one of the effects that we want to kind of try to carry on and focus on. The other thing is that people now, to some degree, at least can work home at least a few days a week, maybe not go to work all the time, which makes it really not a big problem at all. And so that's one of the things that's also impacted choices about that, maybe about where they decide to live and things like that. And I think the third effect that the pandemic has had on enrollment is that it has changed how people educate their children. So you have a lot of people choosing to homeschool, I'll just base it on that. And although some of those people related back to public schools, um, in, uh, this, in twenty twenty-one, some of them are still out there, just to stay on that as well. So I think those are important things to keep in mind. So after we look at some enrollment data, in a brief, we can talk about birth, population, housing, and then look at enrollment, and then look at the forecast. So let's go to the next slide. Next one after. Okay, this is your enrollment trend from October, um, from October two thousand to October twenty twenty-one. I typically use October because it's the peak month of enrollment in the state, has been enrolled in the state highest. And if you look here, you can see that, uh, enrollment between two thousand and twenty-nine years ago went up, about three thousand students. So you had a really big gain over two decades period. And then during the pandemic, it went down some, and it's up a little bit this year, although not back to where it was in twenty twenty. Next slide. Um, you are not alone, and this is enrollment for all four counties in Puteet Sound. And, um, so King, Kingsatt, Kingsatt, and King is by far the largest, uh, district. And so in twenty nineteen, there were almost a hundred ninety thousand kids in King County. Uh, by twenty twenty, October, that was down to two hundred eighty thousand. And it actually continued to go down in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And overall, there's been a net loss of about three thousand students in the last two years that have gone through the pandemic. So, you know, there's, it's, uh, seeing a lot of enrollment losses, or at least people, even if they're here, they're not from that school. Next slide. And just to break it down by county, this could be a little more complicated. So this shows the net enrollment by county for, uh, all four of the counties. And the top left, uh, for their King County, and you can see prior to the pandemic, with the exception of the eight school year, King County was going by four thousand or so a year, went a little bit between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, we had a little lower immigration, uh, in the county. And then the big drop with COVID, they had almost ninety hundred students. And then another drop this year, forty, uh, over forty-three hundred. And you can see if you look at the other three counties, um, Pierce, Kingsatt, they all gained a little bit. Kingsatt was a little misleading because there's a percent pull in there that went up really big and then went back down again this year. Took that out, Kingsatt grew, we look at the regular district, it would have gone by about, I don't know, a few hundred or so this year. So one of the things we're starting to see, at least this year, is families who are in the region, or who are looting around, looking for someplace a little bit, are looking at the far outlying regions of Kingset, so they're more likely to live in Kingset, Kingsatt. And so seeing the minute, they're up the likelihood of living in farther out regions of Kingset, where housing is more affordable and available than Kingset, Kingset is one of those places. Next slide. And notice a little harder to read, I'll just skip the, the gist of it. The top part of this shows the twenty figures that are in, uh, King County, and the bottom part is the charters code. Charter schools did have some enrollment gains this year, um, but if you look at all the districts in Kingset, there's really only a few districts that saw enrollment gains. And this is what I just talked about. Oliver had a gain, Kingsatt had a gain, um, Snowfoly Valley had a pretty good gain, U had a pretty good gain, and then Bashon grew a little bit. So if you looked at the places that grew, the places that saw enrollment gains were in the farther out regions of Kingset. So you combine that with the fact that Kingsatt and, um, Pierce, Kingset, 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 Kingset,[699.91]
Thirty-five kids for every one of their new homes. And at the high end, you get like seventy-five or eighty kids for every one of their new homes. Uh, when we did this analysis for Tohoma, we found that you got eighty-eight kids for every one of your new construction homes that sold between twenty-fifteen and twenty-nineteen. That is huge growth. So the one thing you draw from it is, um, Tohoma is a very attractive district for families. You attract a lot of families with, with children. Not only do you already have a lot of kids, you know, public school kids per house, but when new homes are built, you're drawing a lot of kids from those new homes. Now emphasize, it's single-family homes, not multifamily. We did not do analysis of multi-family. Um, and, uh, so that's something we could do in the future to see what's coming out of apartments and things like that. Typically, if you have multiple bedrooms, apartments with three, four, or five bedrooms, you'll get a lot of kids. If you have apartment complexes with one or two bedrooms, you'll see, you know, many fewer kids. So it's something we could do in the future. But the thing that struck me about it, and the thing that I want to leave you with on this particular thing about housing, is that there's a lot of public school students per house. So when we look at housing forecasts and see how many houses are going to be there, we use those numbers to kind of figure out how many kids are likely to come, you know, enroll from those homes. And it's a very high number for Tohoma, which is what's been driving here and rolling up so high over the past couple of days. All right, next, next slide. I'm going to spend a lot of time on this. These are just, um, new construction projects that were either recently, recently completed or that are in the pipeline, been completed over the next five years or so. Um, there's about twelve hundred units. Uh, half of those have recently been completed and are, um, some of them are already occupied. The reason I include recently completed units is because you'll sometimes see growth from them for several years. We like to factor some of that into the model. And then there's another six hundred or so that are still in the pipeline that are likely to be built between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-six. And I provided this, so if you're interested in looking at specific developments, finding out what's going on there, you have some of the detail about it. So if you go to the next slide, it just shows a lot of math. Um, so the numbers on those slides, the little blue, uh, circles with numbers, those correspond to the number of math on the table from the previous slide. Most of the developments are in the city. A few of which, see here, they're scattered in the unincorporated areas as well. So we use this information to kind of track, uh, where the growth is likely to be and what the impact would be on specific schools. So I just wanted to give you a little more detail this year than I do in the past. All right, next slide. So as I said before, this is kind of what we're projecting for housing. Uh, between twenty-twenty and twenty-thirty, it's about the same number of houses being built as we saw between two thousand and ten and twenty-twenty. The one thing I want to emphasize here is there's going to be a few more multifamily and a few less single-family, uh, going forward. A lot of the development in the city is moving towards multifamily. Uh, that's a, that's a trend throughout King County. They're trying to get greater density, get more people living within the urban growth boundaries. So they're pushing for more, uh, multifamily. So a lot of the housing is multifamily. Although already some of it that's being built in your district are multiple bedrooms apartments where you have, um, they're clearly designed for families with children. All right, all right. That's, and go one more. Okay, um, I think I said this last year, or get to the end here, so, um, I think this is kind of a very important slide. I think I said this last year and I'll say it again, um, a forecast in some ways is very simple. It's made up of two things, it's assumptions and math. Okay, so you have some assumptions that you make, and then you have some statistics that you, that you use, some math that you use off of that. And the assumptions are the important part. If you get the assumptions right, you generally get the forecast right. If you get the assumptions wrong, doesn't matter how sophisticated or cool your math is, you'll probably be awful a little bit. Okay, so I wanted to lay out some of the assumptions that I use to build the overall forecast. So we're predicting high-term for sale of existing homes at least through twenty-twenty-two. We're already showing you're going to have some new housing added to the district's housing stock. And given the number of kids per house, that's probably going to add some kids. Um, I'm expecting continued migration of families with children to the outlined regions of King County and the Piquet Sound because housing is more affordable and more available in those outlined regions. And Tohoma is one of those outlined regions. And then, um, just consistently large number of public school students per house means that when I do a housing forecast and I say, okay, you've been for somewhere in the fifteen, fifteen students per one of your homes in the district, what does that all look like? And if you models like that, it shows you that you're still going to have some growth. Having said all that, as kind of mentioned this along the way, there are some moderated factors. Okay, so the recent decline in county births, so births continue to go down. Overall, K-12 enrollment is going to be a little bit lower. Uh, we're also seeing lower population growth in the Piquet Sound. If that continues, it'll affect K-12 enrollment growth. And then you can't help but miss the news lately. Uh, we have inflation, we have mortgages going up. So we could see, um, kind of a pullback in new home construction and sales in the near term that could be impacted by rise in interest rates and things like that. So there are some counterbalancing factors. Uh, it's a little early to tell how all that's going to play out. So right now, I think, uh, the median forecast that I did in this year's update is very similar to last year. And I didn't feel like it was, given all the data I'm looking at, it was, you know, appropriate to change it dramatically at this time. So if we go to the next slide, this is the low, medium, and high forecast. I do not know why there's no, uh, marks on the, on the medium and the high either. Anyway, so basically enrollment opened up, you know, from its current level where it's low, but below where it was in twenty-nineteen. By twenty-twenty-six, in the median range forecast, which is my recommended planning forecast, it's time to get up to about ninety-two hundred students, about ninety-seven hundred by twenty-thirty, and then ninety-eight hundred. Now, if you do see a slowdown in new home construction sales, you see a real, real drag in terms of lots lower births, um, then, you know, you could turn into that low range for, uh, you know, even next year, a few years beyond that before it starts to turn up again. And then the higher growth assumes that, you know, we get back on track and we see something more similar to what we had before the pandemic was, uh, in place. So basically, this forecast is not dramatically different from last year. Until we get another year of information, I don't feel like it's time to update that long range dramatically. And given what I know about housing that's in your pipeline, how much housing I expect, and the number of kids per house, I still think you're going to see some enrollment growth over time. Plus, I think that, that trend where we're seeing more people opt to live in the outlined areas where housing is more affordable and available, maybe they don't have to commute as much to work, maybe they only have to commute one or two days a week, means that it favors some of the outlined areas. I know for a fact that we had record home sales in Kitsap and Pierce County in twenty-twenty-one. So we're already seeing some of the influence of that kind of stuff. Uh, where people, you know, back in two thousand and seven when housing was on the rise, everybody was trying to move close in because housing dropped its price and everyone wanted to live close in. And now we're seeing like a reverse of that, where people can't afford to live close in, there's not as much housing. And with the change in jobs and heating, people are saying, well, maybe I don't have to live close in. So we're seeing some shifts in that. And I think that favors your district more than it favors like the Belgians and the Isquals and people like that. But we'll have to see, we'll come out of there. And then the next few slides are school projections. And, um, basically for school projections, we look at the trends of the last few years and we factor in housing and particular attendance areas and we try to figure out what growth that would be. So this slide shows a low-grade projection that corresponds to the low chart on the previous page. And if we go to one more slide, next slide. This is the median, so this is the one I recommend at this time for planning. And if you go one more, it is the high. You can see what, uh, what that might look like if you were to go into the higher. And that is, I'm going to stop there, so if you have questions or comments. I know I went a little longer than I planned, but it always takes a holiday for this information. So, um, I will stop there if you have questions or comments. I do have the full report, hopefully you've got a copy of that. And if you have questions you have now or questions you want to email, um, you'll try to get to those.
So we, we know that there's seventeen hundred units coming our way in the Growth Management Act. Um, I couldn't remember the timeframe associated with that for twenty-four. So we're going to pick up thirteen hundred and seventy-five homes or units by twenty-thirty and then another six hundred or four hundred. Okay.
Yeah, so, so there's about twelve hundred homes that are, as I said, were recently completed or in the pipeline. And so some of those are recently built and count and are already converted in the twenty-twenty to twenty-thirty number. And then others will be built later. And the reason this school projection is up beyond twenty twenty-six is because, uh, I keep the homes that I know are currently on the books to do these projections. Beyond that, I don't know exactly where hopefully get buildings. Very likely in the future, just school and it's one of the incorporated areas. And that's where you'll see some additional new, new housing development. That's typically the way it goes.
Les, what do you, uh, I remember when we got the initial, I don't know if it was a draft or if it was important. We got it a couple of months ago, months ago now. Things have changed since then economically. Like what are, what are things that you're watching? You know, you had your assumptions out there, thank you for those. What are some things you're watching as you watch this play out over the next three, six, or twelve years?
The thing that I'm watching the most is the real estate market, the home sales. And the reason for that is that, you know, that's the most likely near-term impact with the rise of interest rates. People are going to say, it's a bad time to sell a house, it's a bad time to, to buy a house. And that may put a stop to some of the thing. I think, um, it also, if it comes to national trends, that's really bad because it's happening everywhere, people stop moving. Okay, so not only do you see fewer people living within the area who already lived here, you see fewer residents moving into the Piquet Sound and places like that. So the real estate market is by far the most important feature, um, of what's going to happen at least in the next two to three years or so. That's the one I would keep my eye on. And playing your district, you know, keep an eye on the real estate market, how's your realtor's? Ask them what's going on because if it slows down, it'll probably happen in five offices.
Thank you. Can you, Les, can you, uh, I think you talked about this, but I didn't quite track on it. Uh, the multifamily units, um, you know, I think you mentioned something about multi-bedroom units. You know, you can kind of rely, have the count on some school-aged kids being there. Can you speak a little bit more about the assumptions that you have based on multifamily, you know, apartments and all of those?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so the average for multifamily, the area like yours, this is all multifamily, is assumed to be about twenty, somewhere between twenty and twenty-five kids per one hundred units. All right, so that's just all multifamily. Um, but when you look at multiple bedroom units where they have, uh, three, four, or five bedrooms, those are designed families with children. So in districts I work with, those, in those kinds of developments, you can see forty-five, fifty, even sixty kids per one hundred units. So I know there's one or two of those that are, that are just recently went in or owing in. So I expect, you may not get from single family, but you will get, you know, pretty good, uh, growth from, from multifamily to have, you know, multiple bedroom units. Um, and so that's the thing you kind of want to talk about. If there's a lot of one or two bedrooms, you probably won't see a lot of kids grow from them. Does that answer your question or is it four?
It did, thank you, Les.
Okay.
I, I, one more for, could be for Lori, but, um, of the medium, low, and high for twenty-twenty-two, what's our enrollment looking like for next year? Is it tracking with one of those or?
We're, we're using median term projections provided.
Yeah.
Um, and based upon the analysis that we did, it looks like that would be the closest one.
Okay.
But there is some, maybe through the spring, uh, just to, just to give you some guidance, I mean, some districts, a lot of districts saw their enrollment increasing the spring as we got a little bit further past COVID. The other thing is I saw a few like this, for, for others, a really high kindergarten district. It's also getting some, uh, just to give you some anecdotal stuff.
All right, so, um, of the multifamily permits that you look through, I'm not sure exactly what records you went into to dig that information, but is there any, is there any, is there any distinction between like app market, multifamily versus like low income? Is there any, is any of that section eight housing or anything like that in terms of, uh, does that impact, um, enrollments, uh, projections or anything like that?
Well, um, hard, hard to say without looking at the big project, but yes, it's in. Um, in the districts I work with that have a lot of section eight housing like Hyland, um, typically that is, um, a lot of that housing is built for, kind of, the children. So it tends to be housing that has local bedrooms, these are that, so you see better growth from some of them. Unless it's, you know, again, unless it's just something that was built for, you know, single adults, one in videos and one bedroom, things like that. But a lot of the section eight housing seems to be, um, particularly low-income districts that are in, a lot of that is family-friendly housing, and they see a lot of growth up. Uh, off the top of my head, I can't tell you specifically about the projects. I did get into the data a little bit because I don't remember it as well. But there, there, there's, there'd be some projects in there that were multiple bedroom units. And I went and looking at them, I said, okay, you're probably going to see some big growth coming out of those. So I assume some higher building is going to be getting those.
Les, I can help you out there, um, because I've had this conversation with the city and the EDC. There are none of the planned, uh, multifamily units at this time are planned on being section eight or even low-income housing. There are some of the senior housing that has, they have a, have a factor of that, but none of the actual, um, multifamily for, for families. And unless it's correct, we're looking two to three-bedroom apartments, um, in a couple of these areas. So as you know, we saw a significant increase in the number of kiddos, um, that we, we gained when we opened, when these two new apartment complexes opened up right before COVID. It was significantly higher than what we had previously seen in the smaller apartments that we have here in Maple Valley.
Yeah, the other thing I'll say about that is the real estate market, art, the low bedroom, things like that. People flock those home improvement apartments, you know, as a place to hang out while the things improve.
Um, last, I have a question. Um, so since we have seen our real estate market here in the valley, um, slow, the houses are sitting on the market longer than they were, um, from what we have seen most recently. How, what is the, I guess, what is the parameters that we're working within when we say we're in that median projection? So because we're already seeing things slow, how much room do we have to say that we're still okay being within that median projection and not having to go outside of that? Does that make sense?
Well, uh, again, it comes back to assumptions. Okay, so if you come in a little bit below the median, and even if you stay there for a few years, as long as things pick up and improve over the long term, I think you'll be back on the median line. It's only if you have a really long, long-term kind of drag on the economy and the housing market and things like that. Remember that even during the housing bubble years, things were terrible. And keep telling you, the biggest impact here from two thousand and seven to twenty-eleven, and at the end of twenty-eleven going into twenty-twelve, things started to really ramp up. And it doesn't look like, um, it'll be that bad, but it may depend on how bad, you know, whether we go recession, you know, things like that. And I wish I could tell you there's easily predict that, but there's not.
Yeah, but we have room within that medium kind of range.
Yeah, yeah. And I still think it's the best thing for long-range planning. You think about the Piquet Sound over time and the economy and things like that, that eventually some of that growth, if it slows for a while, will sort of find its way back in there. And they're likely, again, because of the, the family-friendly nature of your housing or whatever, the location, I don't know. Um, you're likely to get some quarter of that growth. You're actually likely to be better at some of the larger districts in King County that I think could get really slammed in terms of the goal loss of the next year.
Thank you.
Anything else for Les?
Les, thank you so much for joining us from Arizona tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Appreciate it.
Take care.
All right, thanks.
So I have, I have a question for Lori. I didn't want to ask this to waste his time, but I, I am mindful that we have about a year left with you. And you are at these numbers so much. I would love for you to take just a couple of minutes now and think out loud about how you apply this information when you're giving out these bonds, budgets, that, things that we should be thinking about as we're considering these numbers.
So I think working with Les over the last few years, um, he's starting to get a little bit more familiar with Maple Valley. And we actually contracted with him this year to actually do even a deeper dive into our, our numbers, which he, he's, he's not, I've seen quite a bit of that. Um, so I'm really confident and comfortable with what he's projecting and, and the approach that he uses. Um, and historically, we always use those median term projections, um, in forecasting. Now that being said, as Les said, he's using, these are projected headcount numbers for October. So when you're calculating out what that looks like for your budget portion, you basically have to take those numbers and figure out what the average is going to be. First of all, you have to convert it to FTE, and then you have to take out and average those numbers for the year. And I, I'm just used to historical data to do that. So it's, it's pretty formally driven on how I, um, come up with those numbers. And things that can impact them are, right, you start, you know, there's some factors in there that can impact those numbers over time. So that's really the, the driver in coming up with the, um, enrollment numbers, which drives, as you know, our, um, portionate numbers, which drives our, um, to one impact, one part drives our levy, EPO dollars. And then when we're looking at our housing needs are, that actually drives our, what our bond, what our housing needs are. So a lot of different factors. Um, one, I forgot one, also the levy utilization, because that's a factor of your levy dollars. So it's really just, it's formally driven, um, once you're comfortable, um, with the numbers, um, converting those to FTE and everything.
And can you just talk through, let's say that we use the low number instead of the medium, what implication could we have if we were wrong? What would the implication be if we were wrong?
Well, um, a couple of different things. If you're talking about budget, you're talking about what you're estimating, your levy dollars, your EPO levy is different, right? And I always like to get pretty aggressive when we're talking about our EPO because we don't want to be in a situation where we didn't factor in, um, those kiddos. And now we're here, and then you've got four years to report and go back and, and correct that levy should we be wrong. That being said, we're usually not, um, we're usually not hindered by our enrollment when it comes to calculating what amount we can calculate for levy dollars because our success valuation is so low. That's really, that's really the one, the one-line item that, like, how are we, how do we estimate that number? Because that's a big community business. So the way that I look at it is want to be realistic but aggressive when we're calculating our EPO levy. And then when we're calculating our portionate year-to-year, a one-year budget. So it's not, you know, a four-year forecast that we're having to commit to. Um, I like to back it off a little bit from that aggressiveness and be somewhere like that median term, um, enrollment projections and calculate that because it's really the driving of our portionate for the following year. Another thing that we, that Les provided this year that has not, he has not done historically was the low by school enrollment. Uh, and his numbers in total, when I got his numbers and compared them to what I thought they were going to be based upon previous projections, we were really close in total. Like I said, the question was, yeah, pretty close to what I expected. On the by-school, I was off compared to what he had. Now, granted, this is the first year he's done it, but he did a really deep dive on where those housing starts are coming in and where the resales are happening. So, um, I'm interested to watch his numbers this year to see how close they are to what he projected.
AJ, can you flip to the medium slide? Um, just caught some sort of large numbers that are showing up on some of these line items. I mean, where do we go from yellow to red, um, on some of the buildings as far as capacity?
I think our real goal tonight, um,
Might be a conversation.
I think the real goal tonight is supporting the board around the upcoming year's budget, getting around that. Um, but what's evidence on slide twenty-five on here is you don't have to look too far ahead at places like Mission Park and Oak Creek where the growth is really happening and that we're going to need to have, um, conversations with the board about how we manage that.
I, I've pushed in links comments about, you know, the understanding of the district. And I, I think it's, I'd be much more, I'm still not, it's not a comfortable conversation, but I think I'd be more worried if we were in a district that a lot of houses were going to be pushed into without kiddos in them. For me, it's not just the law housing number, it's the housing number with kids. Because I think otherwise you're having, you're having a Peter Paul conversation, who do I drop to fill what? As long as those units have children, mid-school age children, then we don't worry as much about the portionate number, right? Because we're, we're not, we assume our costs aren't going to go down, right? Our costs are always going to go up. If our enrollment goes down, then we're, we're cutting, we're getting cut by both edges of the, of the blades, so to speak, right? So if at least if those housing needs, at least if we're, if we're a district that's attractive to families and schools, that mitigates a lot of, manages a lot of houses, manages a lot of taxes, that's kind of my big highlight and takeaway from that. And even with, without new housing starts, um, you see that churn, you know, of families without kids that are moving out and families with kids moving in. So, um, that purple line on, on that particular slide today was, was one that I keyed, keyed down for sure. It was, was the churn of existing homes.
Yeah, that's kind of information that you don't have, but it leads to us, and Les can be into it with his resources and break it out for us. Because, yeah, we can call the city and how many new constructions are coming through. But that resale number and kiddos coming out are, are more difficult to figure. And I know when he got to those numbers, he actually called me and said, holy cow, you guys are, your resales out there are unbelievable. And I said, yeah, that's, look at that, look at that's the generation factor. I mean, that ties to that assumption, you're right, so.
Yeah, Lori, I want to go back to Pete's question earlier about the thirteen seventy-five, seventeen hundred. Um, when, when the city was told seventeen hundred by twenty-fourty, did you say that some of those had already been built out though?
We, we, I, I mean, I was curious because we were above the number from their previous plan. And I said, oh, so we need to take those off. And I, I clarified that with the city, and now it's started, it's started working.
Seventeen hundred, you answered, but you got it.
And so he's, his number doesn't match up because he's just utilizing those, those that are in the pipeline and he knows that are going to happen, not just looking at the comp plan, what the anticipated could be. He's looking at, okay, where are the open plots at and how many houses can we have in there for multifamily?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Obviously more, uh, longer-term oppositions is on that. All right, thank you guys, appreciate it. Um, because how well, we're going to move down to item two point oh two, uh, board director liaison roles. It's actually us, not, not the liaison roles, specifically all of them. It's talking about the Soma Care's goal areas that the board have, uh, requested a conversation around. Um, I guess the two things, I'm going to put the fact that you guys have the conversation. The two parts I think that are important is, um, number one, clarifying the expectations, uh, with each other around what does this actually look like in practice? What does it mean when you're walking into a building and looking for whatever? And, and then also the expected shareout of how that occurs as well, so. Maybe it would be helpful for us to begin hearing from you guys, um, why you thought this might be a, a good direction to go.
Yes, and I'm going to actually have Haley, if you're comfortable, describing your idea.
Oh, okay. Um, well, I was thinking that, um, the idea really kind of spawned from the work I feel like that we've done through our site plans. And I feel like having the opportunity to sit and look at, for instance, like for me, I was, uh, And I feel like having the opportunity to sit and look at, for instance, like for me, I was on Belonging. And the ability to sit and listen to all nine schools on Belonging really allowed me to learn different things about the schools in a way that I had not had the opportunity to do so this year. My two schools this year were Summit Trail and the Wilderness. And although those meetings that I tried to get, you know, out to the schools per month like we all do, those were valuable, but having a lens like one of our goals and then looking like at a prospection of each of the schools through that lens of that goal, I think could be a richer conversation and be more that we can maybe bring back to the board and talk about together and just provide, just provide really a richer experience. So that was, that was the problem.
So if I'm understanding your idea correctly, the idea is that we would hand in our school assignments and trade it for this Home Care's assignment? So if you are the belonging person or the equity? Yes, if you are the equity person, then you would go to each of the nine buildings one time throughout the year, ask questions, gather information, and then work your magic.
Yeah, I support the idea, it's a good idea. I think it's challenging to go into a building with, you know, I feel as though like the clock's ticking when I'm there and I've waited a lot of time covering five BQ topics that are, you know, involving the Care's goals. It's challenging to do it, but I feel like with the amount of time I have, it's a seven, which is something I want to talk about. And it's topic two. So having one topic and actually being able to dive it in meaningful, deep ways, it's maybe more impactful.
I love the idea too of knowing more schools than just the four that you're assigned to. I feel like I know Shadow Lake and Rock Creek so well, but if you ask me what's happening at Summit Trail, I have no idea.
Good, you're right, it would be one visit to a school per month.
Yeah, so we get your nine months. So then I think the other interesting piece would be, and I don't know if we're really in them, and this is where my green nature, my greenness in this position shines through, but I don't know if we'd be in the position to, like, if we're meeting at Rock Creek and they're talking about Belonging and Equity, sharing something, "Oh, I just wanted to know where the Wilderness is." This is maybe something they were doing. Like, I wonder if it could also be that we're providing a little bit more to the schools as well during those conversations outside of just the things that we're sharing with each other, but it could just become maybe helping to kind of circulate information. Maybe we could help with that a little bit as well. But yes, one school per month on that goal.
Yeah, I like, I move my, indeed, I like being an expert on something more than being really broad and kind of shallow. I'd rather be deep, but I think my only, my thought on that as a possible challenge is like when you're visiting the school once, every long cycle, like how helpful or productive is that in terms of like a cadence to like cycle information and use it and improve upon it and improve upon it again? So that would be my only thought, like how can we solve that? Because I do like the idea of being, being an expert on something.
Mike, could you actually speak to that? Because I know that was one of the things you were writing down as a goal for this discussion, was clarifying our expectations. As superintendent, what expectations or hopes do you have for these visits? What would you like us to accomplish?
I think I like what Mike said about getting a depth of knowledge in a specific area. I can see big benefits of that. So when we sit as a board and we're having this conversation and the topic of partnerships comes up, we've got an expert sitting in the room who has a finger on the pulse of what's happening across our whole system. I can see value to that. I recognize the challenges of getting, getting a really good taste of a building in just one visit is hard. I think there would be logistical problems that have more than that happen. With the schedule, the way it was just mentioned, that would mean each building is going to have five visitors a month. That's a lot of visits per building. And so moving beyond that feels like it might not be what we want to do. So, oh, it's important. It may be that we need to coordinate that and make sure that we're not hitting one building five times in the same month. We spread it out. On the go to Glacier Park this month, you're in Rock Creek, you're in Glacier Park.
Can you repeat that? Why would there be five visits come up?
No, there potentially could be.
Okay, so we would just need to create a schedule to launch this.
And whereas we only have one liaison board member, only one person to schedule with, members, like, I'm a bit concerned for that. I think I would want to hear from Lori and Dawn a little bit about why as a system we've had building liaisons and what are we going to be missing if we move away from that?
I think one piece historically, I don't know that it's good or bad, but just this idea of a board member belonging to a building and some idea there about then that's this person that begins to know that building a little bit more deeply, maybe has a connection to learning experiences or extracurricular experiences or kind of more a whole, complete building kind of experience. I think that was the idea historically. And so I don't know how much that's being realized right now and how beneficial that is. I'd be curious to understand from a principal's perspective, what they thought maybe would be a trade-off if we moved in this under direction.
Another thought that goes through my head is kind of like, it's not the right term or phrase, but like business hours, liaison and non-business hours liaison, like for what we traditionally thought of as site visits or building visits or whatever. Maybe that role when we go check in is attached to the cares goal. But when it comes to the assemblies or the after-school events or the PTA or the whatever, the after-hours or non-business hours, we all still have a building to, that we hold on to for those kinds of things. Not for the business hours business. And that way we still have that connective tissue and still have a relationship with the outside agencies and forces that are coming on that building if a need arises. The principal was a go-to, like, yep, that's my person, that's my worker, go talk to them.
I think that kind of builds a void of what I was kind of seeing with the, what the conversation we were just having, because one of the things I remember about having board members assigned to a location is because there were instances where things were happening that the board was unaware of. And something happening at Shadow Lake could be significantly different than what's happening in Glacier Park. So making sure that each one of those schools had, what is the wrong word? But that kind of a voice on the board of what's happening in that school, when they're getting their board reports and those kind of things, and understanding what's happening. And it was more on the level of what you're talking about, those after-school activities and different types of events that they were having.
I think it was meaningful to go to Mapleview for me anyway, on the SMO. They had that assembly, the first assembly in two years. It was a great assembly. It was, I think, meaningful to have a board member there for more than just for my intake and for supporting the school students. So I think it feels like that would be a met several times. It would be a blanket invitation of five of us. Maybe shortly, you know.
That's a good idea. I mean, I don't, I guess the next thing I would just wonder would be if we did, you know, if we went the Care's schools direction and then still had our home schools, how does everyone feel about like time commitment, I guess, for that? Like, does that seem like?
I'm going to have a meltdown there. It seems like a lot to me, if I'm being completely honest. It just feels, I mean, when I have an assignment, I'm going to make sure that I'm going to as much as I possibly can. And the thought of having all nine schools and then also these two additional schools feels like a lot. But if we were very clear that it's an after-hours expectation, then it's not.
It might be pushed. It might honestly be a push. Be interesting to hear from others.
And remember, I, world's best rep right here. Yes, exactly. So what were our world's best meetings like?
Our meetings were absolutely fast.
I think, and I ask because I think that if I recall from the retreat, the conversation came out of like, how do we, how do we, how do we pull our cares? How do we pull this through those sites? How do we make, how do we become more productive and effective as a board? And I think that was kind of the context of the conversations that I recall. And I think every, I mean, every building's different. You know, some, one building may be doing really well in wellness and another one may not be doing so well. So I think there's a very humility there where you may not, it may not be a heavy lift on all sides, but I think from the principal's perspective, like, what was, what was helpful to you if it was running in its ideal state?
I think having some sort of focus around all five of them is really important. When I think about the capacity for lots and lots of visitations, that's difficult. But I think if there was a stoked sequence that wasn't a lot, I don't know if I'm answering the question. But if you're ready, it would be five visits per year for each building, which is, to me, that's not overwhelming. For a principal, no. That's more on you guys, because that's nine, plus whatever schools you might be visiting otherwise.
Is it more helpful, is it more helpful to you as a principal if we're sort of a jack-of-all-trades as we kind of think about the whole spectrum of home and home and cares? Or is it better for us to be like an expert in one and be able to?
I like the idea of being an expert in one. That's me personally. I think it'd be, it'd be easier for me to dig in deep and have that agenda set in my head of what we're talking about, rather than, I think for me, I would just focus on academics, you know, the academics and the belonging. Those two pieces are relatively easy for me to talk about. And I think that it'd push me to think outside of that box and really focus in with each person on their one expertise area. That's what would be helpful to me, because I think it's easy to sometimes get a little lost when there's five of them and not necessarily focus on all five of them, but say, "Well, yeah, belonging, you know, people haven't seen what's going on with belonging." It's really easy for me to talk about with all five. I think it'd push me to a different level to think about that on an expertise level, but would also provide me an opportunity to plan around what topic we are going to be talking about and be able to prepare for some things in that area as well.
I agree. I like the structure idea of having, having a structure to the meeting, because I would feel like that. Again, I mean, I, you know, I just started visiting schools, so I feel like I come in and just be like, "Hey, how's it going?" I mean, and that could just be me, but I feel like knowing, like what you're saying, having a deep dive into one of those goals just provides a framework really for both of us. And if I think about also visitation in terms of, like, personally how it went for me, I would imagine, you know, I had my two schools that I visited monthly, but then I tried to get around, so I knew, so I felt like I knew the other schools. So, I mean, one month, you know, I was over at Shadow Lake, and that could have been the same month that you were there doing your monthly visit, but then maybe one of you also jumped in because you hadn't been to Shadow Lake in a while. Whereas we knew that we were visiting one school per month and we knew we were going to get to all of the schools. I feel like I wouldn't have been doing that. I would have been kind of jumping around and perhaps actually overloading them more than we would be with this plan. Because I know that I would have that opportunity kind of where I would be to each school eventually.
The other piece I would add is that, you know, all school board members are welcome at our school anytime to drop in and talk about whatever they'd like. But I think that these very headed direct and well, again, that meetings around a specific topic would be really good.
On the flip side, there's each building runs four months where nobody shows up, at least. So if you saw a gap month and you're like, "I haven't been to Shadow Lake in a while. I wonder, you know, what I'd be bugging them if I showed up," and you see it's wide open that month, it kind of gives you a little bit of freedom to go.
That's fun, that's fun.
That's right. Box you out.
Or maybe those months where we're not visiting, so what did you say we'd have five months? Maybe the other months are focusing on our home schools somehow. Do you know what I mean?
Well, we're always going to have a month for that each building. Like, the schools run four months at least when they don't.
So not to overput it and add more complication to this, but do we also want to clear departments? Meaning? And I'm going to do, yeah, I'm going to also make sure I go to custodial maintenance or transportation.
So then, now that's a little one. I think if, if it's, if it's like all of us are going to see 10 departments and I'm going to talk about wellness at 10 departments, like, that's a little one.
But we are visiting ones right here.
Right. But I'm not visiting, I'm not visiting 10 departments right now.
Well, we're going to be assigned to a department, right?
Well, that's what she's saying, like, do we use the same model and overlay it with departments? So I'm talking about, is that what you're suggesting?
I'll just take a couple steps back. I just wanted to test it. So now we'll rewind and tape and we will just say maybe next year we can think, we can see how the system goes and then we can expand the program.
For mindset.
Yes, yes. Do you feel like you have third direction?
We haven't answered any.
It is interesting in just the moment, just sitting here with you, switched to the departments, and I was like, I would, I love you all, and that would be awesome. But I also like couldn't even imagine that moment of, like, I feel like when Mike won on me, like, I'm, some of it's like Sam is saying, he sometimes comes with some questions and some kind of pushes, and I couldn't even imagine that happening with all five of you.
It would be awesome, but it would be an all.
It's awesome, but this is like, whoa! Just straight back me. You're an expert and you're experienced with this. Imagine someone like extended enrichment or food service who hasn't, just getting.
Getting a lot of those.
Something they just started, I think, would be overwhelming.
It sounds like maybe for the schools, if the calendar's tight, we could try this. And if we could coordinate the schedules and make sure that they weren't overlapping, then we could give this a go. I still, I still wonder though, what is the, we go for a visit and then once every, many months, and then what do we do with it? I mean, how, how does that translate into something that we're going to?
Put the report up.
So one of the parts that in my conversations that I've had with each of you individually that continues to come up and come up is around accountability. And I wouldn't know how we go around these goals. This definitely provides an avenue for individual board members to know how we're doing in our goal area. So I love that aspect of it. And one of the common ways that new learnings are shared with me are through our individual meetings. Hey, what's going on today? Hey, what are we, what are we doing in this area, whatever? That's there. If the intent is to ensure that each of our five goal areas are being tended to in the way that we want them to, then that solves that. If the intent is for each of the five board members to have an opportunity to share all of their learnings at the end of the year on how we're doing, it'll be a different avenue, whether it's a work study or something different, that's certainly an option. It just really depends on what's the intent of this board wants to accomplish.
Well, I think that the, I mean, you could do the report.
I think that the, I mean, you could do the report out. Here's what I learned. You know what's going on. We could use the board reports for that. If we were really intentional about it, then this is what we're doing. Not to open up that, you know, but I'm just.
A board mission.
You went there, you went there. But I mean, that would be, that would be a, a way to report out in a, in a way that's, you know, appropriate and consistent with the meeting. Or it could be, it would be, yeah, the peer anchoring, if my advice, do the Huddins report model basically. And follow the back to Mike.
What I, what I don't like about the board report portion of it is that's not conversational. That's simply reporting. And if, if we were sitting in a work study where each of you were sharing out what you're seeing, you then have access to all of the directors and other people in the field space that you may not have seen or may not, the principal may not know what's going on in the song. That would be my opinion, if, if it was important to share.
I would like that. I would like an end of year work study. I can't tell my cares report out in a work study.
Is that all I know?
I, I would, I would turn it up too, but I don't think it would be. Unless kind of end of year moment, I wonder about the structure that you guys were using a little bit a year or so ago, where at some of the work studies, you spent the last 20 or 30 minutes, and maybe it isn't before you have time, but having a thread that, because if part of your theory is that you want to act as a little bit of an integrator across the buildings that you're touching, where in your core area, then waiting all the way to the end to kind of have that conversation together would not support that as a portion of.
I like that. Using the work study almost as like your board report then, right? Yeah, as a little launching the opportunity to actually have a conversation. I like that.
Are we all, we're not really, but thumbs up.
You have enough clarity there? You have enough clarity there? Yeah, the, I'm thinking about the last piece of Don shared. I agree. I'm just wondering, you know, if in December we have a meeting, you've been to three or four schools. Less than half, how much clarity do you actually have? But I don't, I don't like the idea of thinking of these as summaries. This is ongoing, just like our site times are ongoing, our department times are ongoing. And so just processing that, the timing of it, I don't think we have to decide on it right now. Just an awareness that the model would be through a work study and and if it's helpful to have quick shareouts at the end or something like that, we can certainly do that. The, I think the format that was once in my head we were talking about is noticing and wondering. Those are your two charters. You're, you're gonna go to your buildings and while you're there, ask the questions about your goal area and the work market areas and the work that's happening. When, when you come back to the work study and we have a conversation around it, sharing out what you're noticing and what you're wondering would be one format that we could use that seems useful is as a starting spot. It provides importantly, it provides an opportunity for the questions and the gaps to move.
We definitely also say just, everybody's looking at saying, there's the goal and there's the targets. And so here's this sheet and Michael's doing wellness and he's got his wellness, you know, goal and targets. And the principal knows that that's, not that they're like going down that as a checklist or something, but you know, the conversation is gonna center somewhere around there, are there any evidence of what you're doing? And that provides, you know, a rough template for you guys connected to what is that really looking sound like? And as you're doing them, that's also probably the place where you can do a little bit of sharing and refinement, either in your conversations with Mike as you're doing that, or that could also be, you won't be very expert at it at the first couple. And you guys will learn things as you're going and you feel like a little more impactful and you'll share that all, the whole group.
Would we have an opportunity to maybe, I don't know, is through work study what that looks like, but maybe even brainstorm on like, what, what are our top three questions, like you're saying, that, that we want to use when we're in these meetings or in, in evidence? You know, the, the pieces of evidence, the questions, and then find a way to make those be the ones that we report on? Just so that then we have kind of like, we're all speaking kind of a common language and maybe can a little bit on that chart or is that?
I think asking teachers and making up sport development.
That'd be great.
You know, we love that game more than that.
That's right.
That would actually be.
The other part that's going through my head, you know, I was sitting here looking at the goals and targets and and as you pictured, David, you were talking, walking in to sit down with the principal and you've got, like Don said, you've got the list there of what all the targets are, but those labels are almost, they're not useless, but no board member, no two board members will have the same interpretation of the label. And for me, this is an awesome opportunity. I've flipped over to, the team has written out descriptors of all these targets that are super valuable. And, and so this provides you then with an opportunity, okay, my seven targets, I know these that are really deep level, not just the label level, but what we're actually trying to do. That kind of, that gets me excited. It goes back to what Michael was saying.
Do you think it would be valuable to, and I don't know how you typically do this, but at the start of the year, like let's say, do you, do you normally like roll out and maybe email our information to the principals that says, okay, so, you know, Keith's gonna be on high expectations, he's gonna be on equity, but then letting them also know maybe if we go this line, what our home schools are, then would it be beneficial to say that we will be developing these questions and maybe let them know so they can integrate the questions into their agenda for what they want to talk to us about so that they're ready?
For sure, letting them know.
Okay. So just.
We'll just have a conversation and let's talk about, you know, what is it looking sound like on the principal's side to, you know, do the sort of sharing and push ups.
I think it could be a good way also to support our site line work though. I think sometimes it could be to a business.
Yeah, sometimes that feels like we get too, too backside of the year and it's like, do what we're gonna do. And then we have our debrief thereafter, the actual site line discussions and things. It would be nice to have a, you know, to drip something in between those two periods and that's, that's more helpful than I think that, you know, we've talked about not just be accountable, but just be helpful and collaborative about it, so. We've, we've touched on this a little bit already, but I've had it going through my head. I want to, it's a shared understanding of what a successful building visit looks like. Obviously, if we're, you know, if we have a agenda that's scripted and we're asking some questions and we've got some things that we know that we're to report out on at some point down the line, that's, that's an outcome that we are hoping for, but, you know, I, I always feel as though, like I said, I believe that we've got a limited amount of time and that, you know, we're, there's a busy school day going on all around us and so I, I'm, I'm always gonna chatty, get in there and spend a ton of time. So, you know, I'm late at the visit, I'm getting out of the principal's office, going to classrooms every time I'm there. You know, one of the kinds of things that we're doing that would be, you know, when we come back for the first report out and I go, Pete just sat there, he didn't go anywhere, like, you know, that's everybody else did. You know, so I, I'm just wondering, what are those attributes that we should be striving for and that the principal should be expecting too? So that we all kind of just have a share.
It sounds like a magnet to me. I feel like that's a really, that's a really good thing to kick off next year with. I am mindful that you haven't shared that. Do you mind, do you have anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Sounds good. I'm enjoying being here. I really didn't experience, I really didn't experience happening at school this year. Since I joined some like two, nine, 15 years of my, because I really don't know about this system of that work. So, yeah.
I think it begs the question, I mean, like the question is how does this work? Depends if you have a very specific area, you know, what you're gonna go and do, talk about, right?
But is it, is it, to that end, is it, is it just talk? If I go to, if I go to, if I go to home elementary, it's like all's right in the world, right? It's very, it takes me all a great class, great teachers and you can, you, it's, it's easy, no offense to Jared. Every time I go, it's, it feels sometimes like it's the same thing. It's like, he's gonna show me some great instructional practice in the classroom. I'm gonna see a bunch of happy kids. I'm gonna see kids run up to Jared and, you know. You have, it's easy to get into that mode. And I think this is maybe, this is the sort of focus, like, hey, that's great. Show me something. Let me go talk to your counselors today.
Right.
Instead of showing me the great teacher, then you'll see some relevant things are happening and see where we can have that visible.
Okay, so we have, I'm gonna save that, what I think we've been talking about, just to make sure I covered everything. We are going to have a meeting soon-ish in the next couple of months to talk about what a successful site visit looks like. That will include having a specific list of questions that we would like to incorporate into our meetings, which teaching and learning will help develop for us with collaboration, I'm guessing with principals and other.
Yeah, can I? Prior to the having a meeting, I think asking Don and the team to draft up some draft questions, but then also characteristics of a successful visit, but I, I wouldn't want to overscript it. Because buildings are all so different.
They're different.
And so I'd be really cautious on that. I don't know that we need a meeting to accomplish that. I think I'd love confidence in teaching and learning for putting out high-quality things.
Well, and Michael and I had talked about it at our last, I mean, we were together at just the moment of going to others from the board perspective, as well as from my, my perspective, and we have, and the, the principal could want to. And so that moment of kind of test writing a little something to get started and if we're still wanting to do that on that position as well, then for October or then in September, so we can do that right away.
Would it be helpful if, if, say I'm the equity person, if Tony came with me and all of my nine visits? Or if Liz came with the wellness person? If you, if I'm the equity person, would it be helpful if Tony joined me when I went to a building each time? If I'm the wellness person, would it make sense to have Liz join me when I go to a building each time? I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just curious. But I don't think I would.
I think you can have times where it might. I wonder what you care with them or what you care about them and just that element of trying to have the most complete picture. So I don't know that it's a, it's an either or.
Sure.
You know, it might be interesting for you as a board member to try it once with and once, and just like that moment. And every building is different, but.
And I think that's a good example, thank you, Don, the like wellness, whoever ends up being a wellness person. I can't imagine you not asking to meet with Liz and walking through all the work, what her perspective is. I mean, whoever it is is gonna get grounded in the work, practice with this.
Malia, do we want to try and assign those roles?
And actually, I also would like Tamara to create the schedule for us. I think having a one-point person would be really helpful so that we don't have, she can even work eight days in one of those. I have a.
There's a lot of ways that we can accomplish figuring out who's gonna do each assignment. A lot of them is we put the list out, the top three, see what happens. Arm wrestle.
My ass is a competition. Can we do a dance fight? Dance fight, axe throwing.
I, my recommendation is that people just stop at the top three and maybe have a six.
Oh, we need, remember meeting or?
One, two, three.
Right now.
Write it down or are we saying it all up? Oh, you were just gonna write it down and I was gonna, oh, okay.
Oh, we're just writing, not trying to get it.
Yeah, you're.
We're gonna tell you.
Well, I trust that you're actually gonna. All right, it looks like we need to increase in our ability here.
I guess Karen's guilt, you know, all important, they don't want to.
I don't know. Did anybody, did anybody put high expectations as their number one choice? Michael?
Oh.
That is good.
You're tapped out.
Actually, I put high expectation, high expectation, high expectation.
What about equity?
Can I just say the other four, I put, I'm good with any of the other four, so use me as a wild card. You two duke it out or you three and then put me on any of the other four.
Matt.
Partnership.
Prayer ship.
Not worship.
Wellness.
High expectations.
That one's already taken. You okay with wellness? Is that, are you getting your third choice?
The near time and culture.
Oh, I like that.
Your emails are good for you.
I like them.
Okay.
That was easy.
Wow, we're a good team.
We're a good team. So Tamara will create her schedule then.
So you mean like she'll cycle through the building so we know what.
Is it?
Mike, when I was in, cut me off if you don't want me going this direction. When I was in your office the other day, you had also kind of departments that coordinated with the goals on a, on a spreadsheet? Didn't you? On a chart?
Uh, yeah, that was from a retreat that.
It was not, that's something, that's an, an October retreat discussion. Okay, so it's like September? So we won't get departments at the speed time if we're going our.
Now, we're, we'll talk about departments and, and the gaze on roles at our retreat. And then those don't actually switch though until December. Well, it's not switching December.
We have a, I think that traditionally it's been like, if there's not an election, then you can switch earlier if you want it.
It's in policy.
It's in policy.
You can't switch until the first meeting in September.
Is there a way to clarify those prior to then? Because I wanna be, I wanna help in September. I don't really know what mine is, so I think that Matt and I are both on, I think there should be, need clarification.
Malia and I can look over the current roles and then send out an email. And if there's comments about.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
President Paul, I think that's your third.
Yes.
Two point oh three budget.
Do we sign on schools too or maybe at universities?
We can, we, we can probably, well, let's keep our schools if you guys are a bit. Or when, when any of them listen out, we should leave the lists. So, so you know, current rules, these are rules against schools.
Arch, when you email that out, will that be up for discussion?
Not until, at the retreat.
At the retreat, yes.
And that's it. I'm just editing for him. Okay, thank you.
Maybe you're like building this in some way.
Yeah. Do you need a copy?
That's it.
Okay, so. I will forward it to you.
I'm here to see that. Lori, Bill, look pretty comfortable.
Thank you. It was your friend.
Great, here, this is yours, because I. No, I'm not, I, I'm sorry.
Not a grand, you're fair. It's all right. He'll put, pop it up here in a second. But I, it's the same presentation that, um, AJ will be putting up on the screen, but I wanted to get them our copies. So you could, some of these numbers are smaller, so you take a look at the numbers and then maybe if you want to. So we're gonna start off with the revenue assumptions, some of these we are gonna talk about. So revenue assumptions that we've been made for the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. First of all, as we talked earlier, we have less on our, the longer first projections for our enrollment, our median range projections. So we're utilizing median projections or FTE development. Uh, maybe assumption of safety net of one point five million dollars through revenue. We actually find out what our revenue is initially tomorrow, so more to come on that. But at this point, we're estimating one point five million dollars. Um, we assume a five point five percent IPD increase for our transportation revenue. This is probably one of the biggest ones that I really, I really don't know whether they're going to take this from the state. It's based upon, as you know, our, um, transportation allocation is based upon ridership. And so it's, it's a formula, a Starks formula, it's a Starks, uh, software package that they utilize based upon our ridership and then based upon our efficiencies that we have. It has a generation factor which spews out, um, our transportation revenue. So we know that they build in increases because they know that there's bus drivers and they build in increases. So IPD for salaries with the increase in fuel projections, we know those have gone up. So I, I think the five point five percent increase in transportation is a fair prediction from this year, but we'll know more in the fall, most likely, um, October, probably November by the time we know for sure. Um, levy collection, um, we've assumed a six percent assessed valuation growth for our EPO at two dollars for one hundred thousand. And then for, uh, the outgoing years, four percent K D growth, uh, for two dollars for those outgoing years of twenty-four, twenty-seven. So it makes us assumption that our current levy would continue, EPO levy. Uh, we've, um, have a proposal to increase our extended enrichment program rates by thirty percent, and we'll go over those shortly, as well as our food service lunch program rates increases between thirty-three to forty-two percent. We've talked about the increases in, um, salaries and wages, there are definitely food costs, we'll talk a little bit about that. And then we have an assumption of our revenue contingency of three million dollars, which is something that's inconsistent in three districts. Have you got it? Okay, so our revenue, um, numbers for next year, we see in front of you are current budgeted numbers. Our estimate, current estimates for twenty-one, twenty-two, budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, and then our four-year, three-year forecast for twenty-three, three, twenty-six. Um, but things that I would note on this, and it does assume, um, a two-dollar EPO, as we just said, for the outline years of twenty-five, um, and twenty-six.
But why are we not assuming two fifty?
We could, we could, we've not previously, um, put that on a measure for two dollars fifty cents. The board has made, maybe decided to keep it at two dollars, but that would, that would be a conversation when we see the numbers at the end as we look at our forecasts for the outgoing years about how we close that gap. Definitely a conversation that needs to happen, but just an assumption for right now. Thanks, that's a good question. Um, for those numbers for budget, the, as you know, apportionment is truly driven on, um, enrollment numbers for next year. And I actually kept out the forecasted numbers for the following three years based upon the median range projections for less. And so those are reflected in here as well as the IPD increases, um, for those following years. Following two percent for twenty-three, twenty-four, two point one for twenty-four, twenty-five, and two point one for twenty-five, twenty-six. So that IPD increase and our enrollment is what's providing the majority of our enrollment, or excuse me, the majority of our revenue, which is apportionment. Special education apportionment and transitional by legal, highly capable, special educational, those are all driven by enrollment. So those are reflective of what we believe our enrollment to be. Um, food service and some of the other ones, transportation, those are just specific, purely using IPD increases. So there's no other assumptions, but it was some of those. The federal dollars for next year, we received updated numbers for our title, um, one, our special education, our ELL, um, I would say at our food service. The other ones, which are the smaller ones, we've got a, a title two that we have not received our number yet, so that number can fluctuate a little bit. Um, and our Medicaid and, um, super cause, that that was very consistent. So for the most part, our, our federal dollar budget for next year is a, a nice, well-baked number. Forecasted out for the next three years, purely using IPD for those numbers.
Lori, can you talk about the federal and special education here?
That from this, yes, this year, there was a, thank you. If you recall, we received some ESAR dollars, that additional ESAR dollars for special education in this current year for twenty-one, twenty-two, that did not carry forward for twenty-two on. And we did verify that numbers, it was a one-time only revenue. Um, as you know, can you see the CARES number, CARES dollars? We talked about the CARES, uh, ESAR two dollars that we are receiving this year is a amount of eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. And we're budgeting for ESAR three dollars, uh, one point six nine for twenty-two, twenty-three. And as we know, that's the final year for that, so no additional funding after that. On the local revenue.
Or some of the food, food services?
Yes. Yeah, that's a good question. So if you recall, the last two years, we've been running a free food service, everyone has friends or used lunches. That is going away next year, going back to a regularly scheduled program. So currently, the federal government has been, um, funding that program since COVID began. And we've been operating that as a federal program. Starting in September, we will go back to those students that qualify for free reduced. We will receive federal funds for, and the majority of our dollars will come through as, um, local revenue. And we'll show, I'll show you what that three dollars are on the next page.
So is that a brochure ball, is that federal, said we're not gonna fund anymore?
Right, so we, we, when, when COVID hit, we had previously, kids paid for lunches and those that qualified got used in federal dollars for. When COVID hit, this, the government, federal government pivoted very quickly and said, we're worried about those kids not having access to food, we'll just give everybody free lunch and we'll fund it. So they did that last year and they did it this year. Now they're, they actually put in writing that they will not continue that program in September. They will just fund those that are actually qualified for free reduced. So our federal revenue goes down significantly, but what you'll see on the next page is our local revenue goes back up.
But not by the same amount.
But not by the same amount. Local revenue, um, levies just increasing as we talked about, uh, two dollars per one hundred thousand, um, six percent assessed valuation increase for next year. Uh, we actually, Bill and I had a meeting last Friday with our, um, bond councils. He has a pretty good finger of a pulse for what to expect. Uh, he believes that it's going to be higher than six percent for next year. Um, I tried, if you recall this last year, it was significantly higher than we budgeted, it would be seventeen point seven percent. And we budgeted six percent, so significantly higher. Um, when I asked him, he anticipated seeing that kind of an increase again, and says, oh, probably not those larger increases, but it could be ten percent, so.
But it drives all increases.
Yes, the assessed valuations for sales homes, where they're figuring out what the comps are. Um, King County goes out and does kind of like, they grab a, um, a sample size and they go into term of the assessed valuation, they actually go in and do an actual AV assessment for those individual houses and they apply it to the whole area. So with all of the, as we know, it's happened with price homes in the last couple of years, right? So that, that's what drove that seventeen point seven. Uh, and that's what he believes will drive higher than six percent. But what I have in here at this point is a six percent increase. Now, that being said, the six percent, uh, at two dollars, we aren't having to roll back. We will actually be at the level of collecting because of the seventeen point seven last year.
Can you explain the rollback for, for sure?
So, um, when we are estimating what our levy collection will be when we're going out for a levy to the voters on the ballot, we have to estimate and do some assumptions on what's gonna happen with assessed valuation for the next four, actually, that being five years. And then we have discussions about when we're selling it to our constituents, what is that going to cost a homeowner? And so when we're selling it, we sell it on the fact of X per, what, per thousand dollars. So it's, we say two dollars, two dollars, two dollars per thousand dollars of assessed valuation is what this levy will cost you. So when the assessed valuation comes in differently than what we had projected, we don't want to go out and now say, oh, we're going to collect two-ten so we can collect the total amount that we, we actually, um, passed the Validative Act. So the board made the decision last year when we were going through this process of reviews. It was a question like, no, we want to stay at two dollars. Uh, being said, we might receive less revenue, um, but we're going to say that's what we sold to the voters. So when you do that, the difference between when you pass it out and when we're collecting it is called a rollback. So we rolled back. That being said, we will not be rolling back next year.
So I, I would add, just to be clear, the voters pass the total dollar amount, not the next dollars per thousand. The voters pass the eighteen, nineteen million for next year. Um, it just happens that we, we do the math just to help our community understand what's that impacting you as a homeowner, and we say it's two dollars per thousand. If we had sold it at two, two and a nickel per thousand, or two and a dime per thousand, you could certainly do that. But what we went to the public with at the time is something that equated to two dollars per thousand. So then, of course, time moves on and assessed value goes like this, and it's a big something other than two dollars per thousand. Is it eighteen, one seventy, is that the full amount that we?
Yes, well, if you, keep in mind, it's over two years, right? So still have the first half of this year, but for next year, we're going forward, yes.
Okay.
So we collect it calendar year, January through December, but our, our fiscal calendar is September to August. So we get, we get spring question and a fall question for different years. Uh, the other, if you want to flip to the next page to answer that question. The other local revenue, um, people have a pretty much, you'll see, estimate for this year for food service is twenty-five thousand dollars and we're budgeting next year one point three six nine. So there's that flip side, the change in the federal dollars. Um, the only other significant change, um, on this sheet that I would really point out would be the increase in our extended enrichment or our daycare, um, revenue, and we're gonna just talk about that here, um, on. And a couple of good questions on the next slide. Any questions on the local revenue?
What is, what is contingency?
So if you recall, when we do the budget, we budget three million dollars in revenue and three million dollars in expenditure. So net impact is zero. But the reason why we do that is if for some reason we receive, let's say, let's just say a million dollar grant. And so we get additional revenue. If we haven't budgeted for the expenditure, we need to go back to the state and ask to establish one. It's called a budget extension. So they don't really care about your revenue, they wanna know, this is what you're saying they're going to spend in expenditures, and you can't go past that number. So we build in a contingency case for somebody who, um, that will be, receive an extra grant or for somebody else that comes up for the board and they make the decision they want these contingency dollars. That's not a different form.
So, you know, how did the safety net go up between the budget and the estimate?
Yeah, so we, we budgeted, um, safety net's always been one of those, um, hard ones. I don't want to say hard, because we receive it regularly, but it's a big number, right? And so historically, um, over time, to homeless, homeless districts have a pretty good job. And what safety net is, is safety net is, is a funding for special education above and beyond the state formula. And what they know is there are students that we have that cost us significantly more than what the state funds us for. An example would be an out-of-district placement, which for one student can be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. So the mechanism for safety net is truly a safety net for those expenditures that you haven't received revenue for. And it's a cumbersome process, it's very, very time-consuming. Um, we can, we can, as tested that out in social education. And if you miss, you have to go through and, and actually prove everything out from the beginning of an IEP all the way through to the last dollar and opinion how you're going to spend it. And if on IEP you forget to cross the T, they throw it out. So it's very, very specific. But that being said, the process you go through, you can receive significant money for those high-dollar students. And so historically, homeless has done a really good job and we received, used to be around five hundred, get eight hundred thousand dollars. And over time, that number, as those, um, our students have increased, the needs have increased, the, the dollar amount that we've gotten approved for every year has increased. Historically, we budgeted a million dollars in safety net revenue. That was a safe number. But for the last few years, we have been above one point five. So we made the decision to be closer to what we believe that actually is going to be. We moved it to, to one point five. That being said, like I said, tomorrow, we're gonna know how much we get for this year. That's another thing. We budget, but we don't actually know what we're going to get for safety net until the end of the year after you've already spent all of those dollars. So tomorrow, we'll know what our revenue is for this school year for twenty-one, twenty-two. Lori, what's the, did you ever talk about this, the King County First Start, is that a grant? Yes, that's the Best Kids. Okay, Best Start. Best Start Kids, grant. And then that's, that's, um, phased out next. That's an annual grant that Dawn, um, has, um, applied for and received. Um, we do not have it budgeted for past when the actual, um, current grant has been approved. Dawn, you wanna talk about the chances of it being outside of the past twenty-two, twenty-three? Do you believe that grant would be available?
Um, for, um, I believe.
We have the option to believe.
Stay far. That was a man.
Sorry. Um, so we're on the, on the Best Start grant. We are, um, for sure allocated, um, out for three years. Um, will the amount stay exactly the same? I'll be trying to increase it, so, because for those of you who know me, I like to.
Are you comfortable putting additional funds in for twenty-three, twenty-four? Or is that, because I thought this was the third year.
No, it's not re-approved.
For three more years?
Right.
Okay, that's not three rolling, okay, so you'd be comfortable if I put two forty in there?
Oh, yeah.
For the next three, so through?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't have any reason to think that we won't continue. I mean, we're gonna need all of our, um, goal marks with them.
And accounting has the revenue stream to do it, right?
Right, because they got the reauthorization last August for this one. Um, so I don't have any reason to think that we won't be.
Look at that.
So we just sent you a hundred thousand dollars for the forecast, that's helping out going here.
Hey, I am here for you. So I might not have a problem with it.
And I don't wanna get too in the weeds, but what, what, what programs? Can you give me an example of a program that's, that directly benefits from the best? Esper.
That is Esper.
Okay, yeah.
So that's the two mental health.
Yep.
For us at both middle school and high school.
Okay, there's something.
Liz, half of Liz's name.
Any other questions on our revenue?
And hey, we're half funded with levy and half funded with the Esper for that. So that's where we invested money, dollars at the last, keeping it up. So that's where we invested money, dollars at the last, keeping it up.
So what you see on the next page is our extended enrichment rates. You're going to see what our recovery rates are for five day, three day program for a full day of before and after school and for or after school care. And it proposed increase by 30%. This is significant increase for sure. These rates, then we'll get this program back to revenue neutral. And so it's just positively been running the level of years. So this will get those from our Esper factor of the neutral. Any questions on extended enrichment?
Why didn't we, why don't we run it through?
During COVID, we did increase in our.
Was there, I know.
We did for, we did for EEP actually, we raised it, but it wasn't enough to get it to a revenue. So it's just.
I know what we were planning on, or we were looking into partnering with an outside organization like the YMCA or some other organization that would provide this service. Didn't we decide not to do that?
I'll set that forward. I think we wanted to use the board and log in conversation if we decide to come into school going that route. But primary concern has been keeping this revenue neutral. So doing this to either revenue neutral or move in that direction, stuff on the air for stuff.
So the problem will be solved and then we can move forward.
It's going to be perfect.
I like your attitude. So optimistic tonight.
We know it'll be break even because the capacity is a fixed number, right? The number of students that can participate here is limited. The normal opportunity to do this. Right, so with these numbers, we know what our revenue would be, what our costs are.
The only reason why this wouldn't work is for some reason we don't fill all spaces.
Right.
And that.
We avoid those typically, yes.
And food service rates, this is one that we actually haven't increased the rates since before COVID because we haven't, kids haven't been paying for lunches. So these rates have not been touched for the last couple of years. And we know the cost of food is up, maybe in the end, we haven't increased in salaries and wages in the last three years as well. So even with these increases, which get the rates close to our USDA rates, our reimbursement rates, which is something you kind of want to keep up with. Even even that all being said, we're still going to be in running at a loss to the tune of about $1,000. So definitely going to get us back to break even with the food service. So a lot of assumptions in, as we get back to a normal program, and also the cost in food supplies and what we'll be getting in USDA commodities is another thing that we need to look at. So Mary, Bill and Mary, I will be working closely with her this year to monitor what our costs are and what our participation rates are. That's something else Mary's a little concerned about with increase in costs. Will students be still interested in purchasing their lunches? And another thing that we're going to work really closely with is making sure that those kiddos that should believe need to be on, can be on free to reduce, making sure that those are getting communicated and working with those parents to get those forms filled out. And we've already started with AJ on that next year. And that's a big concern for districts all over the state with this program. Eighteen parents have thought that was a routine of having to do it. And now how do we make sure? The other thing that's a real challenge for Mary that she's concerned about, as you recall, right before COVID is the law changed in a lot of the charging, allowing students to charge and really cannot provide lunch for a student, even if they have a very large bill. And there's requirements to take parents to make sure that they fill out paperwork and whatnot. But we saw an increase even before COVID of some families kind of taking advantage of that and then having to somehow recoup those costs. And it ends up being when the student goes to graduate, they have a very large line left on their student fee. So it's a basic number that all the kids are dealing with. And this, I told Mary, we'll be working closely with her, monitoring those head accounts receivable or unpaid lunches and seeing how we can help support them. Because that will have to be part of these numbers as well.
Is that why we have that? We get, as parents, we get an alert if we only have $0 in the account? Is that what that kind of stemmed from?
Yes, trying to make sure that, you know, because we hear, oh, I didn't know. You know, and we were, the previous process would be put a little piece of paper in Jimmy's backpack so that Jimmy can give it to his mom when he got home if he, I never got it. So, you know, because we're communicating, we're sending emails, we're setting phone calls. Almost nauseating for some parents, like just taking it off the list.
Yeah.
But.
Were we breaking even in the last two years?
You know, we haven't been.
Even with the federal study?
Even with federal, yeah. And even before, it's been a challenge, you know? The last PSC contract that we passed has pretty significant increases for food service. But what really had the impact is when the state put, I said, the SEP program, the state insurance program. Because, which is great for for staff, they get full benefits even when they're only working a very, even for food service, food service historically never worked enough hours to actually qualify for benefits or full benefits at least. So they were always just a small portion, but with the change in what the state did, they receive full benefits, which is great for them, but it's a cost that now is completely reflected in unfunded, which gets covered from levy dollars.
I think it ended up saying a bunch of additional costs because of all of the grade school mandates. So now we're seeing third fleet service of the mandates a couple of years to.
All right, Mary, on that, we'll be working with the great teams to help mitigate that as much as possible. Lots of requirements coming through. They were pushing those through before COVID and everything was kind of bad. I mean, you guys pointed out people leaving, cybercomics, that's all people get fired. But now everybody's getting back into that and just going to focus on the teams on this, so.
Can you share your thinking around the the change from the current to the proposed rates? Were you aiming for a neighborhood percentage increase? You know, for instance, the elementary lunch, why not $4.50, why not $4? Why did that number?
Yes, for sure. So a couple of things. Think about what an elementary lunch looks like versus a middle school and a high school lunch. Just the amount of required calories is different. So it's it's not as expensive in elementary as it is in middle or as it is at a high school level. And so Mary, do you have a bit of analysis about the gap? There's a smaller gap between middle school and calories and the cost of a lunch at the middle school versus the cost of a lunch at high school. And bigger gap, elementary to middle. So trying to get that proportion correct, which was, she thought was a little out of whack. And then the other thing was again, looking at those USDA reimburse, US rate reimbursement rates and kind of getting close to those for each one of these lineups. And that's when we're getting really close to that.
How is our lunch, our prices, how do we compare to other districts?
Yeah, so with these new rates, we haven't seen everyone's rates for next year. So we all, what we had was from last year. We were close to the committee districts, slightly above a couple of districts. But when everybody's rates going up for next year, we're going to be right in the, right in the mix.
Am I correct in thinking that you are coordinating with AJ on ruling out this information?
Absolutely.
So I think there's a great need for our community.
In fact, that's Mary just texting me the answer. So as soon as we get some feedback from the board tonight, we're actually going to start getting all that paperwork ready to go. Communication ready to go even before the budget final lines, so that we can communicate.
I'm worried about this $1.25 lunch increase for families. That just is a huge jump.
And the cost of food, you know, that's happened in the last three years, four years.
Do we do, do we do a good, do we do a pretty good job capturing the people who need the subsidy?
Well, that's what we need to make sure we are doing, right? And I think with, you know, we're not going to turn it any way. So it happens that that's how we get flagged and working closely with counselors and school staff, there's a process protocol that we use. And then really, you know, continuing reaching out, helping develop paperwork, treating it. Mary's really good about that. And so our, particularly our elementary counselors are really helpful.
I had some new conversations with the future ready specialists at the high school right around the winter break time. Sat with Mary and we brainstormed, how are we going to better reach a lot of those families? Because when you send it through email, you're not getting everyone that you need to. So talked about potentially working with the food bank and maybe doing slips that they give in their meals. Last, this past year, the Fed sent out a lot of resources really trying to urge people that it's more than a meal. And they talked about a lot of the other additional benefits that come along with being a free and reduced meal. So trying to hit on those benefits again, because I think the number of families who are out there is still well below the number who are actually eligible in the district. So trying to give a grade about how we encourage people to do that in the different avenues that we reach that this summer.
The college scholarship is one of the biggest things that then families who qualify at seven and eighth grade, you're automatically enrolled and you just have to make it in your own ability, not as a free and reduced lunch, but participation and going to school and those things to end up having the option from that college scholarship, which is a big deal. And that's why Laura and Catherine have been so involved in that. That's our biggest gap as we look at kids who don't show up where they should be or where they say they're going to end up in their 13th year. So that fall of after graduation mission, like 35 to 40% of those who don't show up where they expect that they were saying that they were going to are at one time or in it or FNR in their history. So we know that finances are happy to do an impact for those families. Let's leave it up.
Any other questions on food service? So we're going to move on to expenditures and it's got some assumptions. For substitute, our budget that for substitutes, we just really based it on what our current runway run rating is on substitute, which was higher this year due to COVID. It's about to get to those numbers, so we just monitor those numbers for next year. Our substitute is probably $1.4 million in expenditures, so it's significant. Certificated, historically, if you recall, we wrote a page to the board at the beginning of this year and you were under budget on our certificated salaries. And then we did a deep dive, we brought to the board that, oh, there was a bunch of positions, unfulfilled positions that were in the budget and the people that hired those positions were at a lower rate of compensation than what we budgeted for. Historically, we think something with X of years of experience and X education and that's what we put in the budget. And the teachers we have coming to us right now are significantly farther down, farther over on the salary schedule with less experience and less education, just newer newer teachers. So we actually reflected that in this budget and actually kept it to a so one year experience with a BA plus 45 credits. So what that means is they're farther over on the salary schedule of a newer teacher, which is reflective of what those that we're seeing that we're hiring. And then, of course, the expenditure contingency with $3 million is consistent with that, but we saw on the revenue. So when you look at the expenditure, the changes, there's some significant increases. You look at, you know, revenue, you're looking at like 11% increase. And if you look at certificate, we're looking at 13% increase in overall 11.7 of salaries and wages. And if you kind of reflect that on what's included into those numbers and why the change, if you want to just go to the next page. We kind of broke out some of the increases of where the $14.3 million is reflected, so 11.7. And Bill jumped in when they wrote all these numbers. We have IPD in the middle of 5.5%. So all of our certs and classified had been budgeted for 5.5%. Plus, we had a proposed TDA negotiated agreement, which will be an additional $1.9 million. Some increased staffing for certificate and classified, added together about $2.3 million. Some non-recurring wages, we talked about those S R $3 that are in there as well as some non-recurring salaries we have to budget for this year, $2.6 million. And then just this money is increasing moves along the salary schedule approximately 1.5. So that's how we get to the $14.3. Questions?
I have a big picture question for anybody who's watching this. In terms of how this is created and these changes that are made, these directives are not coming from us. Could you talk about how all of these adjustments and changes come to arrive on this page?
Sure, so you're talking, so the IPD, part of it is negotiated group that we currently have in place. So that's just over just automatics when they happen. And then the increase in staffing has to do with needs. For instance, we added two FTE to high schools due to class sizes and the needs at that. And then some additional staffing throughout the district for different departments that we use and bring directors meet on what the needs are in the district. And then ultimately propose an additional certificate and classified staffing. We leave with each one of the schools, determine what their needs are. And all of those are, those that are determined needing to be put in the budget, they're added in the budget. Have to meet with the directors. Any other questions about salaries and wages? The next area we want to kind of give you a breakdown of is our NSOCs. So those are the non-salary expenditures, materials, supplies, operating costs. We talked about two of these already, but $4.5 million increase, which is about a 22% increase in our NSOCs for an estimate budget next year. And these are just a list of some of the reasons the impact, which are actually more than the $4.5. So there's other areas of the budget that we actually, where you will see a trim cost for this year. Insurance increase, $500,000. You know, our fuel prices, we all know what's happening there. Budget $75,000 additional. We have all of the hot water heaters that are being replaced after these HVAC upgrades is kind of part of that that we reviewed really for a general fund last year and that was approved by the board. Those are one time costs by $75,000. Additional curriculum that the, I believe the board has approved part portions of, correct? Yeah, we're about to, that came to us in the last, and then lots of others. And then special services increase of $250,000. The $3 million contingency, because estimate we utilize it, but we're putting it back in the budget. So that's a $4.5 million.
One point of clarification on that, $3 million contingency, if we put it into NSOCs as a placeholder, that doesn't mean it has to be spent in NSOCs. So if you were to get additional funds, you could potentially spend out of salaries.
All right, so the next page is just kind of the summary of all the items we just talked about from revenue expenditures. And so you'll see a change in fund balance. So budgeting right now, use of fund balance of $10.3 million at this point for this year. Significant, brings us down to 12%, 12.2% fund balance, any fund balance. Forecasting out through '23, '24, you'll see that use goes down to 7.2 and bringing our annual fund balance down to below 10% to 7.1. And then you'll see it kind of evening out in '24, '25, and '25, '26 at just around $4.5 million use of fund balance.
And just as a reminder for those of you who are not on the board, when we talked about our ideal fund balance, we really came up with a different 12% ish was kind of our goal. So this actually brings us to our goal and you can see what happened after listening.
Some of the things that could impact those, we know the forecast, there's a lot, a lot of assumptions that get made in the forecast and numbers outside of budget, so '23, '24 and on. Revenue wise, what could, what things could happen? A couple of things, we don't know what the legislative's going to do next year by any budget. So there'll be potential changes there. And then as a start, we've had a conversation on the levy. And then as a start, we've had a conversation on revenue. I know a question that was posed was if we were at $2.50 cents, Matt, to your point, if we move from $2 to $2.50, that's actually $5 million increase in revenue.
Per year.
Per year.
Yeah.
So just talking about some of the things that could change in that context.
What is the, what is that 12% ideal fund balance contribution? Is that number?
So the school, we do not have a policy of fund balance. It's just discussions that we've had. So I want to ask Julia and Keith, who were involved in those discussions, and we brought it to the board. Other school districts, if you look at what, what averages are and what other school districts are comfortable with, 10 to 15% is not an uncommon number. That means say you'll see districts with a much lower number and you'll see districts with a higher number. That's a number that's pretty.
So in spring of '20, there was a couple of work studies and out of the last one of those, they drafted a policy of 62 hundred, which identified a 10 to 12% target fund balance. And then with COVID, we paused on talking that lawsuit, but everybody knows that's the target number.
Yeah, so I, yeah, my question is like, what does it?
Oh, it's in the math.
12% expenditures. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. 10%.
Well, yeah, I know, I know that, but like, what, why is that percentage, the ideal percentage for a fund balance?
I'd say it's kind of a balance between a rainy day fund, right? You want to have some, some balance there to capture the emergent sorts of things and be able to be all right. But you also don't want it to be so large that, you know, you could, you could argue that we're not being liable to tax write dollars, right? If we had a, continually had a 23% fund balance percentage. So I think it's just trying to find that balance between those two competing forces.
And I wonder, one of the things that, if we look back, the conversation that's happening, that's kind of a one month of expenditures.
Yes, yes.
So it's kind of where that originally derived is, you know, 22%. Not that our expenditures are consistent, you know, every month, but on average, in one month with the, you know, our.
Salaries and everything else.
I can answer a high level of question for Lori, this is, we read about the total fund balance of $35 million. And you also the 20, I've seen the numbers here for 19, 20, 21. And there were an element in the red. What drove that? What expenditures increased over those years? Were we pushing things off in those years or?
Yeah, the main thing that impacted that, if you go back to that point, is when the clear and the levy swap. So the whole way where, the way we refunded changed, right? And so when we started, we kind of predicted that was going to happen. So if you look at that in when those numbers were very, very large and if you had looked at our three before your forecast, we knew that this was happening. Like, we knew our revenues were increasing at a rate slower than our expenditures were. And it all has to do with the levy dollars, we just don't collect at the same rates as other districts. You don't have the assessed valuation that other districts have, so we can't keep up with that increase. But the state is still, you know, also putting IPD, IPD increases due to salaries and wages that the state doesn't fully fund for every position. You know, all of those things competing with the other districts through negotiations, through our contracts is another reason why. So it's just over time, it was predicted, it's called the clip, the levy clip is what it's called. But it's been pushed out a few more years than what we originally projected because COVID changed, the state included some extra dollars and it improved things better than what we had anticipated. So it's been pushed out, but we've seen it coming.
Are you familiar with this there? Do you know, could you explain this?
Sure. So, I'm going to hear, was it Mike? Wait, where the background?
19.
Oh, wow. 19 on five.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Yeah. After four.
I think it was 2010 or 2012 or something.
Okay, that was before then, I think. The actual case was filed.
Yeah.
A while ago. There was a case filed with the state that, school district was saying that that the state was not fully funding basic education. And so they basically sued the state and said, you're not funding basic education. And it was a lawsuit that went on for a very long time. Long story short, they won. Over time, the state has agreed to fix that and fully fund basic education. One of the ways in which they did that was the levy swap, because they couldn't figure out how to do it. Like, how are we going to get money? So they figured they took a portion of everybody's levy and taught that basic education and then put a limit on how much districts could go out and get levies for. They lowered that down, originally it was $1.50, $2.50, $2.50. Then they could say they were funding basic education and that the levies were just for extracurricular or extragricent activities, but the state is fully funding education. They're still not fully funding education if you look at, you know, the breakdown. But that's in the clear case, they sued the state.
And there were winners and losers in that levy swap?
We were a little.
Yeah. Matt, one of the things, we've been working on a Mad Hop Budget Committee proposal to bring to the board. We'll bring that in front of you guys next Tuesday. Bill did a nice job of writing that, what's the issue around this? It's basically answering your question, but I can also.
So when we think about running a levy, as we look at the forecast for 2023, are we, are we building a levy case against the fund balance to maintain a fund balance? It's a balance sheet conversation. Are we looking to just like focus on like cash flow and try to do that? And that's where my question came in, like maintaining this fund balance is sort of a principal thing.
I don't think it's cash flow for the levy. I think the purpose of the levy, I mean, I think you need to have something in your bank, right? You need to have some percentage of dollars in your bank for, for some reason, your role that comes in unless it's going to be budgeted. You know, all those things that assessed valuation is significantly lower than what you budgeted all impact the bottom line, right? So you have something in there to take care of those things so you're not in trouble, right? Because if you commit to your salaries in September, you can't now wait until off. So you have to have something in there. Now, instead, I would say the goal, once you get that fund balance of the right level, is to basically your revenue should equal your expenditures. You've got to break, you should break even, so that should be the goal.
And I think that's, you know, where everything plays out the way that we're sitting on the pages. Get there at the end of next year and the question would be, well, hey, now how do we have a breakeven? And potentially, you know, maybe slightly ahead of breakeven. So maybe, you know, we're just looking a little bit, I don't know, it's about a, yeah. If we get, we dip below to 7% or whatever we're seeing here, over time, you know, how do we build it back up a little bit? But that's what it becomes.
So I guess that's my next question, is what are the levers that we pull to get back up? Can you say that, what are the levers that we, I mean, is there some, you slide, some expenditures we don't have any real control over, right? And revenue is revenue, you know, we don't have control of that to a point, right? And what expenditures are levers that we can pull from?
That speaks to kind of like, might, might I just comment about getting the committee together to kind of help provide feedback? Kind of feedback on what, what the areas are that we look at. Truly the levers, the ones that we have control over on a revenue standpoint, you know, you can't control at the moment.
Correct.
But you can control your levy dollars. Those are the two big ones, right? On the expenditure side, it's, you know, there's the fixed costs and we've got, there's certain things you just have to have. You've got to put the lights on, you've got the insurance, you know, need to keep your buildings made. You have to use, you know, it's all those things. But so, and then we've got certain district directors, which are, like, these home cares, right? So there's certain things that the board is committed to on making sure that it come to life. And so kind of making sure that still happens. And then what are the other things that you still have some controls around where that's a lever?
I mean, also there's drawbacks or there's consequences of the thoughts on that. You just have to realize that when you make these decisions.
Part of it also, if we back up to winter of 2019, when we were going around talking about the EPO levy, we can sit and go through the slides that we showed for that, which, you know, these are, this is what your levy dollars helps support. It's also a good to refer to those as levers to reduce expenditures.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at what we've done before, speaking with Mike, says you just, okay, what approach do you want to take? Do you want to look by program? So, okay, let's just list every program, basic education, special education, transportation, food service, gifted, ELL, I mean, you name it, we've got a list of all the programs. And here's the revenue we get for those programs and here's what we spend. Now we've overspent this amount, we get all of those programs to a breakeven? Or is it approach kind of, do you take a different approach to look at objects codes? Like, okay, the type of expenditure, not the program. So there's different approaches we can take. I think it has to be kind of a combination of those that we look at. You know, you can only count, cut so much of NSOCs to get to that number, right? It's just insignificant. There's so many of that NSOC dollars that are fixed that just has to happen. So you're limited in your NSOCs and then it really boils down to salaries and wages. That's the majority of our income.
Lori, can you talk a little bit about, well, you mentioned like potential impacts to these numbers that are being forecasted out with the growth of the city? And I'm a butcher of this, I'm just letting us all know that. But the taxable rate for, taxable rate, that's why I'm not sure if I'm using the right word, for residential versus commercial. With the growth, if we see more commercial zoning and more commercial, can that help us in some way?
Yeah, absolutely. That's what other districts have. If you look at like, you want to really.
Isaguau.
Seattle, Isaguau, Bellevue, I mean, they've got very large commercial base.
Did we see anything come through from Amazon?
We haven't, I mean. We haven't seen that yet. That property isn't like a high value property that's down there. But yes, for sure, that's, that's the start, that's what you want to see. Actually, our highest assessed valuation property is Redwire, I believe, for a commercial standpoint. But it's not very, as far as percentage, very, very small percentage.
Do we have anything in the works though, or anything in the community development plan that's going to potentially improve that?
So there are, there are definitely additional, when we was running through that map that he showed you.
Yeah.
And actually the EDC, we had a meeting today on it, showing where all of the zoning changes were happening, what the impact is. There's definitely, I would say, our, our biggest chance for that is over the Donocole area. That definitely be, it's going to be mostly commercial at this point.
Okay.
And some of this multi-use that we're seeing that's coming in, there's a lot of that that we're seeing. The apartments on the top and then commercial, there'll be, that will definitely be additional assessed valuation.
That is not outside of quite 26.
No, well, it's, so I'm taking that into account tech on our AV growth. AV cents, I said, assessed valuation. Oh, sorry, assessed valuation growth. So if that grows faster, then it doesn't, it doesn't change the, the dollar amount that we actually go out and get from a percentage. But it helps the homeowner because it's less per, per $1,000.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions? Just wanted to run through the last page to be, just to kind of what we were just talking about. It's a $4.4 billion fund balance like this upcoming 22, 23 school year. And then the first year of the forecast of 23, 24, it drops down to 7.2 and why the decrease of $3.2 million in use of fund balance. Just kind of wanted to give you a visual of where that was coming from. So revenue increasing on our PPO, assessed valuation that we've seen the last, last year and then next year, $1.8 million. And then some non-recurring insurance, we talked about the NSOCs, which were those oil state dry that we're doing this next year. And then non-recurring, non-recurring salaries, expenditures, $1.1 million. So it adds up to a total of $3.5 million. Any other questions on the general fund? Okay, the next three pages are just the other funds. So we have the general fund, which is the biggest, I'd say most important, but the, the most important budget, I believe, that we, that we put together each year. But we have other budgets as well. We have the transportation vehicle fund, the debt service fund and the capital projects fund. So we have transportation vehicle fund next. This is really just, just like big yellow buses. So you see the requests come in front of you every year for purchasing the buses. We purchase about $600,000 a year in buses, which equals about four buses, depending on what kind of buses we're purchasing. And we receive about, about the same $600,000 in revenue. And that's depreciation revenue that we get through the state. So we literally get depreciation based upon our fleet of buses. So the more buses we have, newer buses we have, our depreciation goes up. So nothing really different here. The only thing I want to point out is due to the, what we're seeing in distribution and actually supplies out there, we had, the board, who called forward, had approved for the purchase of four buses this last fall. We got notice that two of those buses should be ready before school starts. The other two we will receive till probably late fall, winter. And we also received notification that the rates are going to be going up significantly for the next year. So we committed to afford more buses. We've really seen, seen that come to the board to purchase those buses in the 22, 23. But we're actually getting them at this year's rates with a little bit of an increase. So it's definitely a smart thing to do.
Just real quick, I asked Mike, myself, the words of Lori, I asked about, you know, electronic or EB type buses, alternative fuel buses and to answer that clearly out there. You've got to think about the infrastructure behind that as well.
There's some districts that are doing it.
Yeah.
They're bigger districts, right? So they're, I think eventually we can get there. I think that's probably the way things are going, right? But we're letting other people figure out how to make that work. And the most difficult thing is going to be when we're at one point where we're going to go, right? Because you're still going to have all those buses and you're going to slowly grow over. So you're going to be running two fleets, which will be really expensive, really expensive. And then the infrastructure just to do it, okay? There's probably capital. Debt service, this budget is literally just aimed for our bonds. So this is our bond collection, levy collection that we have every year for revenue, the levy tax, that the voters approved with the bond interest tax back in 2017. And then the expenditures are just paying off the principal and the interest on those bonds. Do you meet with our bond council on, last Friday, Bill and I did? And looking at potential, potentially refinancing on those laws next year? Or we watching interest rates to see if that makes sense or not?
Can you talk about our bond ratings? I think it's really an area of celebration.
Right, so we have an A, a triple A to bond rating, which is second to highest bond rating you can have. The state has the highest bond rating, which does have a, when we got sub-bonds, is definitely something we tout out there. The, because the state also has such a great bond rating, they have what's called, basically, they co-sign a loan, the state does. So we're, we as a district are very favorable for selling our bonds out there on the open market through our bond rating.
Michael, going back to your question about the general fund balance and why, that was, that's one of the pieces of Lori you're sharing is our generous fund balance is one of the reasons why we have a higher rating.
And I did mention that from last week, what impact that would have in the future. He says it could have an impact, depending on all the other factors that you look at. You're a very stable district, I mean, they look at a lot of different factors. They look at the wealth of the district, they look at the stability of the district, all those things. And he says it could have a slight impact for a long measure, depending on what that adjustment was. But being very clear and precise on what we're planning on doing with that fund balance, we really. But being very clear and precise on what reply I'm doing with that fund balance, it would be really important. And last, if not least, is the capital projects. This is very similar to what we showed, we showed you back in February, I think, when you approved the HVAC upgrades, you do the review of the budget. You'll see, one of the things I have to do for capital projects, is it's not a budget by year, it's a budget by project, that's the one thing that's done differently. So it looks different in this format, because it's over, over a course of many years that some of these large projects are completed. So when I'm budgeting, I make the assumption that, as of certain time this year, we're not making any more payments, so that I make sure that we've got enough budgeted next year to pay for them. So I don't know when those bills are going to be coming through, in August or September. So that's why it might look a little bit funky from a budget standpoint. But what we have right now is, we have our tech levy built into this, and then we have our HVAC upgrades that the board approved. And then really, all of the other items in there are just remaining costs for previously approved projects. And then you'll see down at the bottom of the GPTS, which is our portal, that we come into the board at the end of the month, and I put those in there as proposed, so you see that in there. But all of the other projects are in progress.
Sorry, I'm backing up, you said, so there, there's a strategy to allocate and where? For what reason we're pulling from the fund balance, it's not just a bottom line calculation, we're deciding maybe we're short on M-SOCS, that's how, that's why we're making the fund balance. So is there a strategy to that in terms of?
On capital projects?
Yeah, when you, yeah, no, just, I'm backing up a little bit.
Okay, back to the general.
Yeah, back to the general, sorry. So is there, is there a strategy in terms of how you allocate the overages into the fund balance?
The use of the fund balance? You can look at it any different way that you want to look at it. The first thing we do is, for instance, an example would be our certified salaries and wages, and all of our certified teachers have a base salary that's funded, basically, through the state application. And then they have what's called a PLE contract, professional learning. And that part of their contract is funded through local dollars. And so that part makes sense to break out, between that, that part comes from the levy and the other part comes from the state. So there's some rational things like that, but there's other ones that doesn't fit that.
Technology levy, can you explain that?
Sure, so we have a tech levy, it's a four-year technology levy. That, it goes at the same time as the EPL, so we'll be ready to get in, in 2024, for collection in 2025.
And is it 45 cents?
It's going to be down to close to 40 cents, that it was the high, because it kind of rattled down, it's 48 at the high.
Yeah.
Right around 40.
Okay.
40 cents for $1,000.
And then, a year ago or so, we had a work study where we went through kind of our, you know, what are the needs in the system from a capital standpoint? We scheduled it out over, I would say, three years, four years, five years, whatever the last of the time. We did a great job of figuring out what all those needs are and how urgent they were. What's the status of that relative to this list of projects?
So if you recall, we brought the HVAC upgrades to the board back in February, it was significantly more than what we estimated, right? And so the total bill on that all in was like $20 million. And we, there are things that have to get done, for sure, some things are more urgent than others. And we really wanted to focus on location park for our 35 TES, because those are the systems we're having those problems with. Which is why you see the $14.3 million for HVAC for this next year, that was a project that the board moved forward on, that's getting actually started on Monday during the school right now. There's some remaining HVAC projects that are not in these numbers. And we talked about, hopefully, and I'm confident that this 14.3 is high, because it's running like a GCCM process, so it's like the maximum it could possibly be, that's the G nets. And we're hoping there's going to be enough savings in there to help fund some of the other projects that we want to get done in that HVAC upgrades. Other projects that were listed, probably one of the other big ones was re-carpeting the location park. That's really was the other big one that was left. And that one, I believe we're going to want to do, we're going to have to look at this at the end of next year and kind of figure out, okay, where are we at, what are the priorities? What are the other HVAC, we want to move forward on that, we want to look at doing the carpet, it's about $500,000 to re-carpet a school. And then there were also some other small ones, like Maple View Stadium Lights and some parking lot upgrades, but they were pretty small, but the bigger.
Septic or sewer or something.
We got those pretty much all taken care of, Septic's been taken care of. But we, yeah, so there's some other small things that, that we want to figure out going forward, that I think as we look at the housing, and is there something we need to do there? Is there, is it part of the capital levy that we want to include those in? Because it would definitely be part of the next levy that we've been helping with.
I love this so much. The format of this is the clearest I've seen in how many times, three years? I don't really know how long it's been, but anyway, this is fantastic, it was so clear. I felt you really pulled things out that we didn't need to be paying attention to, so I'm so grateful for this. And I'm wondering, as you look at next year in transition, are you all going to have a chance to work together again on building a batch? Okay, because there's a lot, there are a lot of other pieces.
This is really, really great, right?
Yes.
Real quick on the capital projects fund balance, what's a goal of your fund balance? Like, we do have a general fund goal.
So you really don't need to have a balance?
We need to move.
Right, well, because it was all leftover dollars we just had spent out yet. So we don't have a, we just see they were projects that we just hadn't completed. And they got, they got delayed because of COVID, so that money was sitting there waiting for these projects.
But you see the goal of 2.4 million, and it's just like, okay, why don't we spend that money?
Yeah, well.
That's, that's kind of what, I mean, what we.
Well, that's, there's a lot of projects that we have, that I have.
That you're talking about.
Yeah, wait, there are significantly more than 2.3 million dollars, which is why I wanted to put them in there, because I didn't want to prioritize what the board, I could if I wanted to show that, but it would show a name of pretty distinct names.
No, I don't think so, I'm just kind of curious.
No, I think what's going to happen is next, next, as this is used for the school year, if we get these, at the end of this summer, actually, when these HVAC upgrades are completed, come back to the board, okay, here's what it actually costs, here's what we can budget it, that, how much money does that go us back? Or did it cost as much as what we thought, they thought it was going to? And then look at some of these other needs, because we're going to have to start planning for the next summer of what's going to be that project. Especially on the HVAC, pulling all that back and capital and getting that all designed takes a big year.
To some degree, there's only somewhat of project management time we have to handle so many projects, you can't, you don't have an unlimited amount of projects that you can project manage.
We really backed, this summer, we're backed out with the number of projects we have. We really just don't have the bandwidth to do more than what we're currently doing. And then, you know, you give up your buildings, you have three buildings, the summer completely locked down with no use. We're busy and there's something to get done, and so that has an impact as well, so. We've been, we've been doing projects every summer since past fall.
Since forever, yeah.
We keep thinking it's almost gone, it's almost gone, it's taking a little bit longer.
They're so warm, they're so safe, they're so, extra safe, extra warm.
Awesome investments, it keeps on.
Absolutely.
Then.
Thank you, thank you, Lori, thank you. Thank you, Lori.
Okay, so we're going to call this, are we ready for the drawing? Oh, okay. Guys, speak slowly. We're going to call this meeting. Would you guys, please, please, back, please, please, back.